Since this meeting is being conducted remotely, we will not stand for the pledge of allegiance, but because of the current crisis, we ask that you pause for a moment of silence. Thank you. At this time, please silence all other electronic devices. Rob will be called orally by district. Board members should respond with the word present. District one, Carol Berry.
Present.
District two, Margaret Pace is present. District three, Herbert Nelson.
Present.
District four, Anne Martha. District five, Jimmy Garland.
Okay, I unmuted my mic. I'm present.
District six, Charlie Patterson.
Present.
District seven, Josh Baggett.
Present. Jimmy, one thing Jimmy did not have his mic unmuted, so he is here.
Is Anne Martha present?
Yes, ma'am.
Anne is present.
Can you hear me?
No, I didn't. Okay, all seven members are present then. The first item on the agenda is point pride awards, Mr. House.
Yes, Madam Chair. At this time, of course, we love the idea of celebrating the accomplishments of our students, our scholars, I call them, and we have three different categories that we will be celebrating today. So at this time, I'll let my level directors jump in and help us celebrate the ongoing accomplishments of many of our students.
Good evening, board members. I'm happy to be with you this evening to call attention to JROTC team and another individual high school senior, especially in a time when we want to celebrate our seniors and we're not able to do so as we traditionally would. So I'd like to start off by recognizing the JROTC academic team from Montgomery Central High School. They've been selected to compete at the 2020 U.S. Army JROTC Academic Bowl Championship in Washington, D.C. It was originally scheduled for this June. These cadets, they earned top scores out of over 1,490 JROTC teams that competed around the globe. Montgomery Central's academic team is one of only 32 Army JROTC teams in the nation to advance to the final competition, including an all-expense-paid trip to the championship event in DC. And we're currently awaiting word on whether or not that will be rescheduled and if they'll be able to attend. During two fast-paced preliminary rounds, these students were tested on their knowledge of English, math, and science, as well as the JROTC curriculum. One of the main goals of the JROTC Academic Bowl is to prepare students for state exit graduation exams, as well as college entrance exams such as SAT. The winner of the U.S. Army JROTC Academic Championship will compete against the winners of the U.S. Air Force, Marine Corps, and Navy JROTC Academic Bowls in the JROTC Joint Service Academic Bowl Championship. Members in Montgomery Central High School JROTC academic team coached by Colonel Vernon Lightner includes the following cadets: Cheyenne Dalphet, Christian Chesser, Julia Easter, Aubria Peoples, and Nadine Sarthor. Normally, I'd call them up to the podium and we'd give them a round of applause. So if you guys would give them a salute here via Zoom, we appreciate it. The next high schooler I would like to represent tonight also comes from Montgomery Central High School. Montgomery Central High School senior Vivian Hearn was selected as a State of Tennessee distinguished finalist for the Prudential Spirit of Community Awards, one of six in the state. She organized a blood drive at Montgomery Central High School, collecting nearly 80 units of blood from 105 donors. Her efforts included coordinating with the Red Cross, recruiting volunteers, creating a volunteer schedule, making posters, and registering donors. She was inspired to focus on this initiative by her mother, who has encouraged her to donate blood because of her universal blood type. Vivian was also named Middle Tennessee Wrestling Coaches Association Women's Dream Team. She earned first place in the state in the girls' 150 division. So two shout-outs to Vivian Hearn, graduating senior from Montgomery Central High School, class of 2020.
And at this time, I'm going to ask that Mary Guest, our middle school level director, join us on unmuted to honor our Middle Tennessee Honor Choir.
Good evening, board members. Happy to share with you tonight some accomplishments of our, some of our Kenwood Middle School students. During the first nine weeks of the school year, several seventh and eighth grade members of the Kenwood Middle School Choir took part in auditions for the Middle Tennessee Honors Choir. The Middle Tennessee Honor Choir is a very difficult and competitive audition, with about 500 of the best in the state of Tennessee being able to submit an audition. And only 100 of the best of those are chosen to be in the Honor Choir. Of the students who auditioned from Kenwood Middle School, five students had high enough audition scores to qualify. They include Sopranos Faith Graham, Desiree Weston, and Samantha Streisack, Alto Blaze Durham, and bass Javonte Clemmons. Javonte scored high enough to be the third highest-ranked bass in Middle Tennessee. Those students took part in a special concert in Nashville in January. Robert Newmeyer is the choir director at Kenwood Middle School. Congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Guest. That concludes our point of prides.
Thank you. Mr. Mellon, do we have requests to address the board at this time?
There are no requests tonight.
Thank you. The next agenda item is approval of a consent agenda. Tonight on the consent agenda is the CMCSS 2020-2021 Proposed Consolidated Budget. In accordance with the TCA 497202, any board member with a relative employed by the Montgomery County School System please declare at this time.
Madam Chairman, this is District Six Representative Charlie Patterson talking. I do have a daughter that teaches at Rossfield Elementary School.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed? I make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second, District Five.
Okay. Moved by Ms. Berry and seconded by Mr. Garland.
Madam Chairman, excuse me, this is Charlie Patterson, District Six. I believe I was supposed to read the comment there, but I do not have it before me now. But I did want to make note of that. But I will fill it out and return it to our board secretary about having a relative. I apologize.
Thank you. It's been moved in the second for approval. Is there further discussion? We will now vote with a yes or no roll call for approval of the consent agenda. Carol Berry?
Yes.
Margaret Pace is yes. Herbert Nelson?
Yes.
Anne Martha?
Yes.
Jimmy Garland?
Yes.
Charlie Patterson?
Yes.
Josh Baggett?
Yes.
Motion passes seventh to zero. The next agenda item is reports. Mr. House?
Yes, ma'am. The first report you all are familiar with, being that I reached out to share information about our trades classes. And as you all know, due to COVID-19, our trades classes that generally build some of our high-quality mobile classrooms that are out there didn't have that opportunity to finish. We generally get four or five mobile classrooms that immediately, once they're finished, they go into use the next school year. Unfortunately, those classes are not going to be continuing for the rest of the school year as of last week via the governor's call. So this executive order is essentially allowing our operations department to move forward immediately to go ahead and purchase the needed mobile classrooms that would allow us to continue the expansion as we expect enrollment to continue to grow. As you all know, I'm not very fond, as I indicated in my communication, of doing executive orders. But this is essentially one that we had to do. If we don't make the purchases right now, we'll be behind in terms of the setup and having the necessary classroom space in the schools that will see the growth that we're expecting. So that is report number one. Report number two is goal number seven, which is developing differentiated employee recognition practices for employees. So at this time, I'll ask our chief human resources officer, Mrs. Janine Johnson, to unmute and join us for a presentation.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. House and board members. I'll ask David if he can pull up my PowerPoint slide. Yes, thank you. As indicated, this presentation will be regarding developing our differentiated employee recognition practices for the district. Can move on to the next slide.
Hold on for a second. I apologize.
That's all right.
Let's go. Here.
Okay, great. Thank you. This is just a brief summary of the current recognition practices that we do have in place. You're all very aware of the points of pride. We're always very excited when we get to have an employee that receives one. We do employee newsletters, and in those newsletters, each time we do recognize a different employee based on which month it is, which correlates with our monthly classified appreciation. We also do monthly Facebook shout-outs for our employees. We do service awards. We recognize our employees in five-year increments. And I checked, and this year, we have an employee receiving a 40-year service award, and that is a bus driver. So that's really exciting. We do a retirement reception each year. Unfortunately, this year, we're having to cancel that, but we do plan to do something special for our retirees. Many of the board members have attended the retirement receptions in the past. The last few years, we've started the new Classified Employee of the Year. We have postponed that. We're hoping to be able to have that sometime this fall. And of course, the Teacher of the Year red carpet event. And here are just some photos of these different events. You'll see we've got some photos of our classified appreciation and our teacher red carpet event. Next slide. And this is an example of one of the Facebook posts. Again, we correlate that with different positions within the district, and we do send that out. We take different pictures, and our communication department does a nice little write-up, and we send that out on Facebook, and they're shared, and they generally go out viral, and employees get very excited. Next slide. We did have a continuous improvement committee, and this work was regarding retention. But as we talked about retention, we pulled in a lot of the different aspects of how we can help with our retention. We talked a lot about recognition, and you'll see that group was comprised of principals, assistant principals, department supervisors. Again, we focused on current retention trends for classified and certified. We discussed various employee recognition strategies that are in place across the district. We did identify some best practices for employee supports and recognition. And another thing that came out of there was that identified need to expand induction programs for classified and certified employees, which we do feel helps with our retention and is a form of recognition. Next slide. This year, we did do a principal survey, and I'm going to share with you some of the results in regards to recognition. You'll see that we did ask the principals to describe their building-level employee recognition efforts for classified and certified. And 52% recognized employees via newsletters, shout-outs, and handwritten notes of encouragement. 56% recognized employee accomplishments like good attendance, offering gene days, drawings for various prizes, and/or food candy. 12% offered school-level award programs to recognize their personnel and professional achievements. And then 24% reported not having any specific recognition program in place at the school level. Next slide. What can we do to improve? Recognition can be a low-cost retention strategy for all employees. Things to understand: recognition should always be timely, authentic, and appropriate. We want to ensure that employees are aware of their value to the organization and their connection to the mission. And principals and supervisors, we ask that they share their stories, what's working at their school work location, and how they can improve on that. Recognition to engage. A variety of employee recognition programs help improve the culture in the workplace. Employee recognition programs improve employee performance. And again, employee recognition positively affects the workplace outcomes. We can connect it to productivity, the return on investment, sustainability, cost-control goals, and of course, our financial results. And more on recognition to engage. Employee recognition improves recruitment and retention. You'll also, you'll hear us talk each year when we do our staffing and retention report. We talk about retention first, staffing. If we can retain our employees, that goes a long way before we have to start worrying about recruitment. So this is just some information from one of our journals. It's called SHRM, Society of Human Resource Management. 68% of HR professionals report that recognition positively affects the retention, and 56% of human resource professionals state it helps with recruitment efforts. I think our employees, when they're happy and they're engaged and they're recognized, they share that with family and friends, and that does help with our recruitment. Some of our next steps: We want to identify and implement faculty and staff attendance-based recognition programs quarterly at the building levels or district level for next year. We want to explore level director, department supervisors, what they're doing on a monthly basis for staff recognition opportunities. And we develop district practices regarding employee recognition. If you'll remember one of the few slides before, we did have a percentage of schools that indicated they're not doing something specific at their school level. So we want to develop that district guide to help all of our principals and our supervisors. Next slide. We want to develop a district campaign for employee recognition. We want to start surveying our recent retirees regarding recognition practices, asking them what worked at their schools, what are some of the memorable events that they've, in their career, that sticks out for them in regards to recognition. We want to work on some COVID-19 superheroes. I'm sure you've seen a lot of the different communications. We have many, many employees that have done some amazing things during this last two months in regards to COVID-19. And then, of course, a strategic effort with communications to increase the amount of employee videos and photo celebrations for our amazing employees. That's all I have.
Thank you for your presentation. Comments from the school liaison officer? Comments from county commissioners? I would like to begin the board members' comments by expressing gratitude and appreciation to Mr. House and to his senior leadership team, to the school teams, and to all the CMCSS employees for their dedicated efforts during these unprecedented times. Not only efficiently providing students with much-needed food and the necessary curriculum, but additionally providing volumes and volumes of printed homework and modified high-school graduation options is just absolutely remarkable. And thank you, Mr. House, for being proactive and having the courage to step out and close our school system as quickly as you did. The leaf practical editor praised your foresight in one of his commentaries, saying that he initially was a bit skeptical for the early school closing, but he quickly realized that you were three steps ahead of all others. I feel I speak for our school board and for the Carson-McGinn-McGumry County community in thanking the school system for your heartfelt efforts in this uncharted territory. Other board members' comments?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to thank the board for your vote of confidence tonight. Allow me to serve as the area director for TSBA. Once again, I think that the vote did, does mean that there was no objection. And lastly, but not least, Mr. House, I hope I didn't overstep my authority. I would just happen to be driving by Ringo Elementary School yesterday, and I couldn't help but stop and thank those individuals that were out there taking care of our children. I told them that we were proud, as a board, was proud of what they're doing, not only in that vein, but just by being there for our children. And, you know, they were very appreciative of it. And again, CMCSS, you're the greatest.
Thank you, Mr. Garland. You're a dedicated member locally and statewide. And TSBA, I'm sure, is proud to have you. Any other board members' comments?
I'd just like to compliment Mr. House and Dr. Huff and Dr. Perritt. It's an entire leadership of the CMCSS board or system. It's times like this where you see where leadership stands out. You know, I've talked to Mr. House, and I've told him, I've noticed, you know, boss is boss, managers manage, but leaders lead. And in times like this is where we needed leadership, and I just want to compliment everyone for their leadership at this time.
Well spoken. Any other comments? The next agenda item is Director of Schools report. Mr. House?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'd first of all like to thank each of you for your confidence during this time for not only me, but for my executive, executive and senior leadership team. They are the reason why we have stayed ahead of the curve and done our part. What I'd like to do is provide you with some COVID-19 updates, because there literally are 100 different moving parts to what has happened over the course of the last four or five weeks. And as you know, COVID-19 has been a major challenge, not only for the country, our state, our county, as well as our organization. Some of you know this has touched me personally as well in reference to a family member. It's affected many family members in our county, friends. But nevertheless, we've worked really strategically to provide the best services possible, given the circumstances. I'd like to provide you guys, as I mentioned, with just a brief update department by department. Now, this is not everything that each one of our departments has gone through, because we've really had to turn everything upside down in terms of how we operate and how we deploy our services. I'll start out with our operations team, of course, led by Jim Summerall. They've, of course, on the child nutrition side, I think as of this week, have served over 350,000 meals thus far. They also have run a handful of bus routes to those far-reaching areas of the county where kids can't get to bus stops. So we've really, you know, taken a wait-and-see approach. If parents contact us and say, hey, they're hungry, or they have kids that are hungry and they can't get to the bus stop, we figured it out, and we've made a way. Many of our custodians, maintenance staff, and other members of our operations team have also been integral during this particular time. Too many people to name at this particular time. We've had over 400 and some odd essential personnel that go in on a weekly basis and are working. And that has said a lot. Our human resources team has been very creative in developing our first virtual job fair that will actually get underway this coming Friday. They continue the onboarding for our teacher pipeline as well and continue to have individuals from our onsite staff on the front lines. They're actually taking temperature checks nurses for not only CMCSS staff, but also county staff on a daily basis as they go in and try to get the business of not only the county, but the school system done. Our business affairs office has really been busy over the course of the last several weeks on the integral job of guiding us through the dollars and cents on the budget that you all just approved. We've made significant cuts. We were expecting, of course, over $9 million in sales tax decreases, and we had to really sit down every other day as a budget item to determine exactly what this is going to look like. Our communications department has done just that. They've helped us craft and ensure that not only all of our students, but our community at large get the necessary messaging in creative and innovative ways. You may have seen our Facebook page, our website. Website, from an instructional standpoint, has been completely revamped. And we don't pay anyone to do that work. All of it's been done internally. And our communication staff has also been responsible for the thousands of pages of printing. Sherry in our, she's one of our coordinators in our copy center, has been a golden ticket to being able to get this done on a daily basis, and we're dearly appreciative of the communication staff. As you all know, instruction has continued their innovative work in developing and helping with the execution of our learning resources, our online learning resources. Of course, K through 12, we've done something completely different than what we've done before. As you may remember, the majority of our high school students and middle school students are one-to-one in terms of technology. So we were ahead of the curve there. Our high school students are receiving their assignments and their online opportunities for learning through the Google platform. Our kindergarten through eighth-grade students have a couple options. They can either download the learning packets that are being provided, or they can pick them up at one of our 23 sites where we're serving food as well. Our instructional team has also put the pencil to the paper. They literally had to rewrite what our instruction was going to look like in a very short period of time. And on April 6th, had everything ready to move forward. So very, very thankful for the committed individuals that were coming in. Student Services has continued to operate in a very modified way as well, as community members and patrons need us, whether it's, you know, being able to provide transcripts, graduation information. We do our best through student services to ensure that all these needs are met. Technology has continued to work on work orders to ensure that various service calls are completed. They have also worked with just about every department and my leads of those departments on this Zoom call to ensure that their needs are met from a technological standpoint. They deployed several laptops, VPN access, had someone in the building on a consistent basis, two people in the building on a consistent basis to support those needs. There have been several waivers that we've had to apply for in the areas of assessment, accountability, report cards. Non-renewal and tenure waivers have also been moved forward to apply for. We also, and I think it's extremely important for board members for you all to hear this, we moved forward to apply for a waiver for school board members to have extended time for your training. So we know that, you know, some of you may have had some things going on. So we went ahead and applied for that waiver through the state to ensure that you had additional time to get whatever it is in terms of the professional learning hours that you need. The last couple of things that I'll mention is reopening. As you know, the governor has moved forward with the idea of some parts of the state and the economy to reopen. That does not include schools. But what we are doing as a school system and as a strategic senior leadership team is we're developing what it could look like in terms of some, in a very modified way, some of our staff coming back to work. We want to get back to that norm as well. There have been questions out there in reference to whether some schools will be going back into session, and that is not the case. The governor made a recommendation over a week ago to close schools for the rest of the year. But what a lot of people don't realize is we have 5,300 employees, and we feel there's an opportunity for some of those employees to come back to work. we feel there's an opportunity for some of those employees to, to come back to work, even though many of our teachers, principals are working on a daily basis. I watched my, my son and daughter on Zoom calls today for more than an hour and a half with their teachers, and you can imagine twenty, twenty-second graders on, on a Zoom call like this, not on mute. That's work. And it's definitely something that is a new norm that many of our teachers are going through. But we feel like there's a version of that at our central office at Greenwood, at Central Services South. So each one of my chiefs are turning in a reopening plan that will share exactly what, you know, at least fifty percent of their staffs coming in in a very staggered manner could look like. So I imagine in the weeks to come, we will more than likely execute what that could look like. I can't give you an exact date, because what we're doing right now is continuously watching the numbers. I literally wake up at about three-thirty, four o'clock every morning to, to look at the John Hopkins numbers and where things are, to look at the state numbers, have conversation with Joey Smith at the Health Department to see where things are specifically with Montgomery County. And the last thing that I'll mention in terms of our new normal is that Dr. Mason Bellamy has done quite a bit of work. He actually went through three thousand, three thousand comments and suggestions, along with my communications team, because we've, we've moved forward to, to get feedback around what graduation could look like. And when we ask for feedback, we don't just ask for feedback to, to talk or lip service. We got that feedback, and we feel like we've developed not only alternative dates, but we feel like we've developed an alternative plan that could possibly allow us to move forward with a graduation. So we have some alternative dates, both in June. If June doesn't work, we do have dates for July. So we're extremely excited for the possibility of our kids having the opportunity to walk across a stage. That's not just meaningful for our students, it's extremely meaningful for us, too. And we want to be able to celebrate that for our kids for, so, so thank you, Dr. Bellamy. Thank you instructional team as well for, for leading the charge in, in reference to, to graduation. Madam Chair, that does conclude my director's report.
Mr. House?
Yes, sir.
I know that the, you, you put out a schedule for the graduation. How will the board be injected? It doesn't matter to me, but I'm just allowed to attend. I just would like to be in.
We will, we will make cer, make certain in some kind of modified banner to ensure that if, if a school is in your district, we want to make sure that you have the opportunity to be at that graduation. Now, we will take some precautions, more than likely, depending on what the data's telling us at that time, in reference to what kind of precautions we will take. But much like our, our awards program, where we celebrated our highest-performing students via our, our foundation, we may not be shaking hands. So there'll be, there'll be some modified things that we will do. That's a part of what we're working on in terms of our reopening, and we will have additional guidance for you as board members at a later date. Thank you. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. House, and thank each of you for attending this virtual board meeting tonight. Our next formal school board meeting is scheduled for May the twelfth. This meeting is adjourned.